Good morning. I would like to welcome Don Ash to the podium for the invocation and we'll move right into the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you all will stand.
Good morning, let us pray. Eternal Father God, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity. Another day you created, God, we shall rejoice and be so glad in it. God, we ask you to be with us, God, even be with us as we, as a country mourn the loss of President 41 George Bush. Lord, we ask you to be in this meeting, God, guide our minds and our heart as we serve the people of this great county. And Lord, in everything we do, let us give you honor and praise, for it's in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody to the Board of Commissioners meeting, Tuesday, December 4th, and I'm going to ask for an acceptance of the agenda as amended. There are a couple of changes. Number one, we are removing SPOSS Item 22 regarding the Henry County Water Authority, utility relocation on Lester Mill Road. We're moving the Tax Commissioner item up, Item 16A, on the agenda under the magistrate court, and we're removing the approval of the minutes for November the 27th. I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is District Two Board Appointments. First, we have the Henry County Water Authority Appointment appointing Glatania Legrand Stitten, is that correct? Next up, we have the reappointment of Susan King to the Zoning Advisory Board. Lastly, we have Council on Aging, the appointment of Anika J. Cole to fill the unexpired term. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the board appointments for District Two.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Motion passes. Next, on the agenda, we have a Certificate of Appreciation for Judge Wesley Shannon. Melissa Robinson presenting.
Good morning, Vice Chair Holmes and Commissioners. This morning, we have a Certificate of Appreciation, and I'm going to read the certificate, and then I believe Judge Shannon is with us, and we'd like to get a picture with him at the board. So this Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Judge Wesley J. Shannon with magistrate court of Henry County. In recognition of Judge Wesley J. Shannon for serving the Henry County magistrate court for more than eighteen exemplary years, and for his service to the community through philanthropic and altruistic endeavors, the Henry County Board of Commissioners expresses its sincerest appreciation and congratulates him on such an honor.
Want to give Commissioner Clemens a second. You might want to just stay down there.
I know. Just stay in.
Next up, we have another Certificate of Appreciation for county employees. Presenter Brad Johnson.
Good morning, Vice Chair Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. We're here this morning to recognize some of our employees that went up and above, above and beyond service of their normal duties. We had actually three incidents that happened over the last month where, again, our staff, our Team Henry members went outside their ram of normal operations and actually made a difference in someone's life. I'll ask Krista Boyle to come up first. We have three, we'll have them come up, I'll tell you, do we have them all at one time for a picture, if you would. But on October 31st, Krista was downstairs, her Didi's coming by the male bathroom, heard noises, a man came out, clenched his chest with something obviously lodged in his throat. She then went to get the police officer who was actually patrolling, and then advised to call 911, then took action on her hands and actually did the helmet maneuver three times, and the third time dislodging the male, the object that was stuck in the gentleman's throat. So it was definitely a paramedics arrived, they continued some supportive care until then, and basically the paramedics did say if it wasn't for her actions, it would have probably been a different outcome. So we want to thank her for what she did on that day, on October 31st of this year. Thank you. Our second case happened just a few days later, was our fleet director and our fleet supervisor was traveling just off campus up towards Phillips Drive, and a car kind of came at them, kind of flashing their lights, driving erratically, kind of off the road. They turned around to see what was happening, trying to render some aid, there's a gentleman inside having a massive heart attack. At that point, they couldn't even put the car in gear, they had to help the gentleman, but also stabilize the scene by making it safe, get the car in gear, get the keys away. So they did supportive care, so the paramedics arrived and they helped guide the ambulance in and make sure he was, the gentleman was taken care of, he could not speak, but he was in pretty critical condition. What makes this pretty remarkable also, not only they do that, but they actually went through the gentleman's phone list, he couldn't speak, and actually found his family members, the gentleman pointing to the phone, so actually could call and get their family members en route to the hospital to meet their loved one. But it's just some of the things that happen every day in Henry County, but we don't really hear about them till later, but luckily we heard about these three cases. So I would like to have Jody Swartz and Angelo Cartatija, Cartatija, come in. I always mess up Angelo's last name. And our third case that happened over the last month, on November 5th, units were dispatched to a house fire over in the North Hampton area. The first arriving unit was Officer Alex Maddox and Deputy Justin Benefield from Henry County Sheriff, and Officer Alex from Henry County PD. They arrived before fire units did to find a two-story residential structure that had heavy smoke showing, with a gentleman on the front porch saying his son was trapped inside. Not hesitating, these two officers went in and actually found the son, it was thirty percent burnt throughout, thirty percent of the body, and actually brought him out to safety and to get care as the units arrived. So at this time, I'd ask Officer Alex Maddox and Deputy Justin Benefield to come forward. It also shows how our Sheriff's Department and Police Department work together across the lines and across the departments for one common goal in our county. So that's Officer Maddox and Deputy Benefield. So again, Commissioners, as we have a time that we're focused on our day-to-day activities, and you guys hear a lot of the stuff that's not going well, or things to be better, I'd have a little minute to, you know, it'd probably be great to recognize these Team Henry members on some things they're doing really good above and beyond their normal duties. So I present them to you, if we could get a quick photo? Thank you.
Next up, we have recognition of Parks and Rec employees. Rod Gack Gray is presenting.
Good morning. Good morning, we are recognizing two employees from our Parks and Recreation Department who were awarded Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Six District Achievements. These Henry County Parks and Rec, Park and Rec staff members are being recognized for their outstanding contributions in the field of Parks and Recreation. The department was, excuse me, the department as well as its employees received three awards from GRPA. The Henry County Parks and Recreation Department received GRPA District Six Agency of the Year Award. Peggy Hasselback, Recreation and Programs Coordinator, received GRPA District Six Athletics Aquatic Network Award, and James Bull Martin, Facility Coordinator, received GRPA District Six Distinguished Professional Award. We do have them here to take a picture. Thank you.
If I may, I just want to say congratulations to both the agency and to the employees who received these awards. It's been a pleasure working with them over the past seven-plus months. I think we're making a lot of progress, and these awards are a credit to their performance, certainly not my leadership, and I want to, I want to make sure they're recognized properly today, so thank you for the opportunity.
Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from the library. Kathy Paloski presenting.
Good morning, and thank you for inviting me this morning to speak to you about library services in Henry County. We have just closed the books on fiscal year 2018. Our audit is complete, and we're awaiting the report from that, but all of our annual reports that have to be submitted to state and federal agencies that oversee public library services have been submitted, and I just wanted to review for you very quickly, walk you through fiscal year 2018 and some of the things that we have on the agenda for 2019 going forward. And the first thing that we did, let me see, I got this right. Our summer reading program last year was a science emphasis, so we had lots of STEM activities throughout the summer, concluding with our, excuse me, concluding with, in August, we had eclipse observing parties at Fairview Library and at the Hampton Library. We had approximately 200 people at the Fairview Library who came out to watch the eclipse. We had eclipse classes, we got a grant from StarNet and NASA to purchase more eclipse glasses, we got a grant from the Charlie Bates Solar Astronomy Project, and we partnered with the Flint River Astronomy Club to provide these programs. One in Fairview that, as I said, attracted about 200 people. This was the line in Hampton when we opened on the day of the eclipse. This was the line waiting to get into the library to participate. We had over 500 people in Hampton that day visit the library just specifically for this We had a telescope with a solar filter, we had solar binoculars and the solar eclipse glasses, and in addition, we had some indoor activities because of the heat of the day because of, it was August and it was in the afternoon, so we had some indoor, we had a live stream of the NASA live telecast of the eclipse and some other activities and water and snacks in there to give people a break from the heat. This is our computer coder, coding class that's offered for free at the McDonough Library for children ages seven to seventeen. It meets once a month, and in conjunction with the eclipse, they created eclipse simulators on their laptops. And the people in the blue t-shirts here are volunteer mentors, they are all IT professionals from the community, and this program is sponsored by Simple Photo of McDonough, and they provide everything that we need to run that program on a monthly basis. I included this because the young man on the left, his name is Nico, and he is one of our student mentors, he's been participating in that coding program for, since we started it four years ago, and he has now learned so much that he is a student mentor, we have two student mentors actually, and he actually teaches some of the older teens how to do some of the coding projects that they, that they work on, so it's provided him with some leadership opportunities as well. In keeping with our STEM theme, we have wildlife safety and education, this reptile wrangler is the name, the name of this program, they talk about wildlife and about safety with native wildlife in Georgia. On the left here, we have Doc Adams, who does interactive science experiments with the kids. On the right, we have the BioBus, which is from Georgia State University. It is a self-contained mobile classroom, and they were at the Locust Grove Library doing a seminar on the science of sound for children. Of course, every day, everything we do in the library system is literacy and, is literacy-based, and we had a significant amount of activities involving literacy and arts education. This was a drumming class that we had, I believe, at the Stockbridge Library. This is our baby lapset literacy program, and this is an infant and caregiver program. It involves reading, music, and movement activities that are based on the latest research into infant brain development and literacy research. This is one of our interactive music storytimes in Locust Grove. The gentleman in the picture on the left here is R. Gregory Christie. He lives in Atlanta, and he is a nationally-recognized illustrator. His book on the right, Freedom in Congo Square, was a Coretta Scott King Honor Book, it was a Caldecott Honor Book, and it was one of the New York's, it was the New York Times' Best Illustrated Book of 2016. He came to the Fairview Library last summer and did a class for the teens on making, physically making a book, how to construct a book. The Fairview Library hosts, hosted their first-ever multicultural show and tell. People who live in the community, who are from other areas of the world, came and brought costumes, artifacts, money, folk art from their native country, and it was just a really cool sharing time that they did. We also provide health and safety education, this is a yoga class in Locust Grove. We do public safety days where children can meet our public safety officers and, you know, create a good foundation for relating to them in the community. The lady who is doing the presentation in this picture is from the Georgia Library for Accessible Statewide Services, formerly known as the Library for the Blind, but it is now more about accessibility. Anyone who has a visual impairment or a physical impairment that keeps them from being able to hold or turn the pages of a standard book or read standard print even with corrective vision is eligible for this service. It provides talking books in Braille to everyone in our community. It is funded by the Library of Congress and is available at no cost to the users. And this was, in fact, we had a big initiative this year, and this was just part of it, to create more accessible services in the library, to make sure that what we're doing is accessible to everyone in the community. We also added bilingual services, and all of our libraries are Georgia Relay Partners, which means that all of our staff are trained to make and receive TTY calls, which are used by people with hearing impairments. This photo was used not just with the permission of the parent, but the father of this little girl specifically asked me if I would show this to you. This was part of our Sensitive Santa program that we did last summer, or last December, and what we did was we have, some of the libraries host as part of their storytimes in December, they have Santa visits and pictures with Santa, and we became aware that there are a significant number of people in our community, a number of families who have children with sensory impairments that just cannot tolerate the noise, the lights, the crowds, the waiting of a typical Santa experience. So we provided this by appointment only. We had a Santa who was there who visited with the children, the parents could take pictures, and it was such an important experience for these families to do something that, that a lot of people just take for granted as a traditional part of Christmas, that their families had never been able to participate in, and they were just, they were thrilled. And this little girl was waiting while her siblings visited with Santa, and then she, she had a term with them, and our marketing coordinator was reading her book to keep her occupied. This book was also used with permission. This is Murphy, our therapy dog that comes to the McDonough Library, so that children who are struggling readers can read aloud to the dog in a non-threatening environment. This young man's mother shared this picture with us and said that he is on the autism spectrum, and that she said he would have sat there and read to that dog for an hour if she'd have had time to stay that day. Another accessibility point is our digital library. We have all of these services available for free through our website, ebooks, audiobooks, test prep, auto repair, digital encyclopedias, homework help, all of that is available on the library website. We have a number of community partnerships that are thriving. We work with a number of community organizations and nonprofits on school, school supply drives in the fall. We send staff to parent expos, and these are distributed through Connecting Henry and other nonprofits. In February, we do Food for Fines where people can trade a non-perishable food item to have a dollar taken off of any overdue fines that they have, and all of that is distributed through the food pantry of Henry County to benefit Henry County, to stay in the community. The Stockbridge Library hosted Showers of Blessings, which is a mobile shower service for the homeless. They provided hot showers, a hot meal, and a change of clothing for anybody who was We also partnered with Georgia Public Broadcasting to promote The Great American Read, and here we see Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Clemens, who visited the McDonough Library to cast their vote for their favorite book. Commissioner Holmes, can I tell them what your favorite was?
Go ahead.
It was Charlotte's Web. He said it took him right back to his childhood, and that's as good a reason as any to love a book. We have a number of statewide partnerships that are coordinated through Georgia Public Library Services. We partner with the Braves, the Hawks, the Gladiators, to provide reading, reading challenges where children can learn, they can read and then earn a free ticket to those, to the games. We have Zoo Atlanta Passes, Passes to the Center for Puppetry Arts, the Michael C. Carlos Museum, and Georgia State Park Passes, that people can just check out with their library card. We've been doing a significant amount of outreach in the last year and small business support. This was a trivia night that we, that was hosted by Jailhouse Brewing in Hampton. We did the trivia questions, it was a Harry Potter trivia night. It was a Thursday night, it had been pouring rain, and typically on a Thursday night, Jailhouse, if they don't have live music or some special event going on, they might have two or three dozen people that come, come in and out during their open hours on a Thursday night. That night, they had over 200, and not only were people there, you know, spending money at the brewery, participating in the trivia night, but the restaurants across the alley were doing a thriving business because they delivered to that courtyard there. So it was a good economic boost for several businesses in Hampton that night. This past October, we did the same thing at Queen B. Coffee in McDonough. That is another night we had over 200 people at Queen B. Coffee, and in the background there, where, where the line is forming, that's the line to get coffee. It was, it looped around, around the building, the inside of the building, out the door, across the deck, down the stairs, and across the courtyard. So that, again, that was just an economic boost. If these companies had to hire someone to come in and do a, run a trivia night, there are companies that specialize in that. The cost for that is about $300, which makes it cost prohibitive for a small business, but the library system did it for free, and in between trivia rounds, we were promoting those digital library services, our, our other services that we provide in the library, and our outreach programs as well. So we were getting a lot of good information to the people who were there. We participated in the Girl Scout Day, the Henry County Girl Scout Day in, in the McDonough Square. We took, this was actually a full pop-up library. We had a Wi-Fi hotspot, a laptop, we had books that could be checked out, so we could actually issue library cards on the spot and get people involved with library services We also partner with our senior services. This is a pop-up library at the Senior Center in McDonough, where the branch manager on the left had, had just issued this lady a library card. This is just some shots from our summer reading program this year. These programs were at capacity, all of the activities, the free classes that we offered were at capacity this year. So looking ahead, the most frequently requested items that citizens talk to me about are Saturday hours at all branches. Currently, the Stockbridge Library is the only one open on Saturdays, and it's only open for half a day. So that's, that's the number-one citizen-requested thing on our, on our agenda, is to get Saturday hours at all branches. We're still actually not back to pre-recession levels. Prior to the recession, all of our libraries were open eight hours on Saturdays, and currently we have one that's open four hours. So the, the next step in, in getting back to pre-recession levels of service would be to have Saturday hours, at least a half a day, at all five branches. More community-based services. The core mission of public libraries has not changed, our core values have not changed, but usage patterns have changed significantly. We have been getting more and more requests to go into the community, to take those pop-up libraries to underserved parts of the community, and so in order to do that, that is going to actually require, what we really need is a full-time licensed outreach librarian to coordinate that. So that's high on our priority list, and then extended morning and evening hours, we get a lot of requests for more evening hours, and that's something that we can add down the road. We're at the point right now where we're, we're having, we're beginning to have to turn down requests to go to community activities to send a story, somebody to do a storytime at Head Start or at daycare, to do school visits. We've simply got more requests right now than we can manage. We're kind of a victim of our own success in that sense, that the more we do and the more visible we are in the community, the more requests we get. So, no good presentation is complete without some numbers. These are the numbers for fiscal year 2018, how many active cardholders we have, and that is a significant number because of the percentage. Most communities are doing well if they have twenty to thirty percent of their community as active cardholders. We have a significantly higher percentage in Henry County, and those are active cardholders. They actually become inactive after two years if they're not renewed. So this is not just people that are sitting on the, on the books, these are actual active card users. 279,000 library visits, I'm not going to read through this whole slide with you, but the skilled research services provided, that is where our staff have answered sometimes some very complicated questions. How do I sign up for the Affordable Care Act? How do I start a small business? How do I do demographic research? How significantly complicated homework questions? That's how, we keep count of those, and that's, that's a high number of questions. And if we put some dollar values on this, I used the Georgia Public Library Service Value of Public Libraries Calculator, which is based on national averages for how much these things would actually cost if people had to pay for them out of pocket, if people had to pay for all of the books that they checked out, if they had to pay for the interlibrary loans that we, that we access through the, our membership in the Pines Consortium. Those Those skilled research services, all of the things that people come in and use in the libraries, if they had to pay for them out of pocket, the cost would be about over 14 and a half million dollars, if, if our residents were having to pay for those services themselves. And that's a conservative estimate. It does not take into account things like the people who come in, in, in the summertime when it's 100 degrees outside and they don't have air conditioning at home, and they just need a place that they can be without getting run off, a, a cool place to sit in the air conditioning. This doesn't include all the intangible things that we do. Inspiring children to read, to love literature, it doesn't involve, include, it, it's, it's a fairly low estimate on some of the items. So the BOC investment for public libraries is a little over $2.2 million, which is 85% of our operating costs, and that is, we are right at the national average. I think we're actually 80, 84.8% of our funding comes from the Board of Commissioners, and that is the state and national average as well, it's about 85%. The other 15% comes from other sources, grants that are encumbered for specific use. So the measurable value, not including all those intangibles, is over $14 million. So the return on investment is approximately $6 in value for every dollar that you've put into public libraries. And I want to thank you for being responsible stewards of taxpayer money, for doing such an important thing with that money that benefits the entire community. Someone asked me the other day if I could define our, our target demographic, and I said, "Oh, that's an easy question." If you're breathing and you're in Henry County, you are our target demographic. We have something for everyone. We have a couple of things very quickly that I want to mention moving forward. We are in the process of creating a small business design lab. We have some grant money from the state to buy computer equipment. We have a space at the McDonough Library, and we will be purchasing professional design suite software, so that small businesses, nonprofits, community groups, anyone who's interested can come and meet with our marketing director, who has a degree in art and a degree in marketing, to design professional quality marketing materials, postcards, flyers, posters, whatever they need to get the word out about their company. If you're a startup or a nonprofit, that software is very, very expensive, and then you have to take classes that are also expensive to learn how to use it. And we are going to provide that free of charge to the public at the McDonough Library. The computers are all in order, and we are working on getting the space ready. We also have some grant money, some state grant money that I've just become aware of since I submitted this slideshow, from the state of Georgia for major repair and renovation grants. The Stockbridge Library is 14 years old, and it has taken a beating, particularly the flooring, and we are eligible for a 50/50 grant to replace the flooring in the Stockbridge Library. The McDonough Library desperately needs a lighting upgrade, and we are also eligible for a 50/50 grant to upgrade the lighting at the McDonough Branch. And so I've, I'll be meeting with the county manager and the county facilities manager to talk about those projects and bring everybody up to speed on those that needs to know about them. And finally, last night, we had a reception in honor of Dr. Gordon Baker, who has been our library board chair for the last 18 years. He is appointee, appointed by the Board of Education, and he's retiring and moving to Savannah. And so we had a reception to honor him, and the Library Board of Trustees voted to, in honor of him, and to, to honor his years of service to the community, and a career that has been spent making library services accessible to people. For the remainder of December, Henry County Library System will be offering a fine amnesty program. We're calling it the Clean Slate Program. Anyone with overdue fines, whether they're current or if they've been accrued on their library card in the past, can contact the library system to have those fines waived in order to increase accessibility to library services. Library fines were never meant to be punitive, they were meant to just be a deterrent, but in, in reality, in modern times, sometimes they can be a barrier to service. If somebody gets a fine on their card and they can't pay it, or, you know, their, their car breaks down, and not only can they not get to the library, but now they've got a car repair bill and late books. And so the priority is going to be paying that car repair bill. But, but people get fines on their cards, they quit coming to the library, they're embarrassed, they're afraid because they don't know, like, how it works or how expensive it's going to be. And so just to allow, as sort of as a holiday gift to the community, and in honor of Dr. Baker, we will be waiving all overdue fines on Henry County library cards for the remainder of this month, and I hope that you'll all help us get the word out about that. We'll be, be doing a big social media push, we have press releases out to the newspapers, and I hope that you'll help us share the word on that. And in conclusion, I had a meeting last week with Mr. Almaty Holly, who is representative -elect for District 111, House District 111 for the state of Georgia. And he came into my office, and the first words out of his mouth were, "The whole time I was campaigning, I kept thinking, what Henry County needs is community centers." He had a hard time finding spaces for, like, community meetings, for town hall-style meetings to meet with his potential constituents, and he said, "I just kept thinking, it's a shame Henry County doesn't have any, any community centers." And he said, "Then I visited the library, and I saw all that you do, and I realized that we do have community centers, they're right here in our library." So thank you very much for your time. Do you have any questions?
I was going to ask, any commissioners have questions?
I just want to thank First Law Parks and Recreation, I didn't get a chance to say that, for all that you guys do for the community. The trunk and treat was amazing, you guys went all out, and I'm still bragging about that. And also to the library, and Kathy, please, 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 send me emails on the community stuff. I know we get the newspaper, but I would like to have, like, an email of what's going on, so that I can share it with the community and constituents.
Absolutely, I'd be glad to.
And thank you so much for everything with the library.
Thank you. And thank you all for your, for your financial support and for your encouragement in the past year. It's hard to believe I'm, I'm right at the end of my first year as the library director, and I'm very excited about the direction that libraries are going. I'm excited about our, our relationship with the county, with the commissioners, and with the county staff, and how we're working together to move the library system forward and to meet the needs of the community.
And I want to thank you for everything you're doing in the community. I had no idea you guys were doing all of this, and a lot of the things you were doing actually have a significant impact on economic development, and those are things that our local businesses need. So thank you for the presentation, and I'm going to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, same to you.
Next up, we have a tournament presentation by Tim Coley, Parks and Recreation. Looks like Rod Gray is going to be assisting.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little brief statement before Tim does the presentation. Last month, Parks and Recreation had the opportunity to attend a GRPA conference in Jekyll Island. I was with that group. This was a tremendous opportunity for me, as I am still, I still feel like I'm somewhat new to this field, and it helped me to begin to establish the differences between managing recreation programs versus how we utilize our facilities. And really, what I wanted to concentrate on at this conference was learning more about the management and usage of our facilities, and the more questions I asked about this particular topic, the more I received, and then they'd look at my name tag and see where I'm from, the more I'd received the answer, "You were with Tim Coley, ask him." So that's what I did. And just recently, Tim accompanied the CVB on a trip to Temecula, California, to a conference for national tournament sponsors, where we have to promote our county in an effort to secure national tournaments in our facilities in order to boost economic opportunities for our hotels, restaurants, shopping, and Henry County through Splosted and Lost Collections. Since this is the time of year in which we begin to book our national tournaments, I wanted Tim to give you an overview of the process, and then we'll field any questions you may have related to this topic.
Where'd he go? There he is. Thank you.
Good morning. County Manager's Office and leadership asked us to do a quick comparison for tournament field rentals to see where we compared in our area with tournaments. So we, the, a lot of the tournaments that we host around here that are large tournaments, we partner with, with counties around us, because we don't have enough fields, and we partner with Clayton, Rockdale County, Clayton, Newton County, Walton County. So we want to get some of their fees, and so you could do a comparison, side-by-side comparison of what we're charging. Clayton County, the Lovejoy Park, which is Gerald Matthews Park, they charge $200 per field per weekend. So if you rent it for one day or two days, you pay $200 for a field, there's no field requirements, no minimum. Newton County has Turner Lake, which was their premier facility, is $225 per field for one-day tournaments, and $200 per field if they have two-day tournaments. They get a break if they do two days. And their Stone Road Park is $150 per field for one-day tournaments, and $137, $50, or $275 for the weekend if they do a two-day tournament. Rockdale County has Earl, Earl O'Neill, it's $200 per field per day. And Legion Field in Rockdale County is $150 per field per day, again, no, no minimum field requirements. Bucks County has Ernest Bowles Park, which is $150 per field per day, no minimum field requirements. Spalding County does not charge the, for their fields, they let the Athletic Association handle the, the rentals for those fields to, and all the money goes back into the Youth Association. The Youth Associations, they charge $100 per field per day. Talked to Savannah, Chatham County, they are $150 per field per day, and they're one of the largest ones that, that also go for regional tournaments. And Henry County, at the present time, is $150 per field per day, and it's a four-field minimum. So it's $600 for, like Heritage Park would be $600 for the, for the, for a Saturday, and $600 for Sunday, $1,200 for the weekend. If you do a side-by-side comparison, we are, we're in line with everybody at $150 per field per day. If you look at Clayton County, if they do a two-day tournament, they're actually $100 per, per field per day, if they do a two-day tournament. And what we're going to propose to the County Manager's Office is for, for us to raise our one-day tournament fees to $200 per field per day, but, but on the two-day tournament, stay at $300. And that gives them a little bit of break to do a two-day tournament, but it also encourages them to have two-day tournaments where they're staying in hotels, spending money in restaurants, shopping, those, those type of activities, and spending money in Henry County. And just want to give a very quick overview of the tournaments. Several years ago, Commissioner Holmes was at the, at a meeting that I was at, that they held at Berry College, and it was when Henry County and the Atlanta region area lost the, the second race at Atlanta Motor Speedway, and they were, the, the governor's office and tourism office was discussing ways that we could make up the economic loss in Henry County, and one of them was the Southern Crescent College and making it a workforce-ready community, and other things, but one of the, one of the things that they wanted to do was increase tourism through recreation. And they've done, the CVB and the Henry County Chamber of Commerce has done many studies on the impacts, and when we do tournaments, they actually give out questionnaires for the, for the coaches and stuff to fill out, and they turn out how many hotel rooms they had for the weekend, how many times they went out and ate, whether they went shopping and stuff like that. So these numbers are not parking rec numbers, these are numbers put together by the Chamber of Commerce. And we do work with the CVB and the Henry County Chamber to promote tournaments in Henry County. It's one of the largest drives of tourism, it's the second largest behind Atlanta Motor Speedway in, in producing revenue and tax-based income for the county. And we host more than 30 baseball, softball tournaments. Off of those baseball, softball tournaments, estimated income to the county is $14 million with soccer and football, and all of them together is over $20 million. And that includes food, lodging, gas, shopping, other entertainment, and according to Georgia Travel of Economic Impact, it helps save residents $276 per household. The, the other thing, just so you have an idea, when we have large tournaments, the chamber asks us to send them the schedule, and hotels, and restaurants, and tanger outlets, and stores like that at South, South Point, they staff according to what tournaments we're bringing in. So when we bring in large tournaments, they up their staff, which is Henry County citizens working, so it has a lot of residual effects besides just the, the tax base. We host the single largest weekend amateur baseball tournament in the world. We're the host because we're kind of in the center, but they also play at Clayton County, they also play at Jackson, they also play at Rockdale County, Newton County, Walton County. So it's a, it's a whole regional area. There's no way that we could host this field-wise, hotel-wise, or anything else, but, but every hotel from, from the airport to Forsyth County and out 675 and 20 is full due to this, this tournament. And we do partner with the other recreation departments in, in the southern region area to, A, to make sure that our prices are, are similar, and we, we can't afford to lose two or three organizations, or they can't afford to lose ours either. If somebody prices themselves out of this market, and we don't have enough fields to host this tournament, they're going to move this tournament to another location. So it takes a lot of teamwork with other areas and other communities to be able to keep that tournament here. And that's it, that's it for me. If you've all got any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Commissioner Barham.
Yes, Tim, take us through, I, I know that Super NIT is a, a big thing for Henry County, and it's a, a great economic impact to the Henry County, and, and take, take me through, how, how do we get that?
We do, we, we go to their national conference every year, and we meet with them locally as well, and, and all the parties involved, we get Clayton County involved, it's Troy Hodges and, and Dietrich and them at Clayton County, and Jody Johnson at Walton County, and Rockdale and Newton, and these are the fields that we have available, and this is the price that we're charging, and this is the hotel rooms, and they meet with the CVBs, because they don't, there's also not enough umpires here. They have to bring umpires from out of state in here, so they get with the, the CVBs and book hotel rooms for the umpires and stuff like that. So it's a, it's a whole, the whole package of being able to support the tournament from, from tournament directors to umpires, to teams, to fields, to lodging, to everything, and then we, and it's competitive. I mean, we, we compete with Panama City, Orlando, Gulf Shores, you know, a lot of places for these tournaments.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Wilson?
For a four-field minimum.
For a two-day tournament?
So a one-day tournament.
A one-day tournament?
Well, right now, it's $150 per field per day, so if you just rented Heritage for one day, it would be $600. If you rented it for two days, it'd be $1,200.
$1,200, okay.
So what we're going to propose to, to the County Manager's Office, to, to, to stay in line but be in the upper part of it, is the $200 per field for a one-day rental, and then $300 if they rent it for two. So they do get a, a little bit of a discount, but we think that also helps us being competitive and bringing in tournaments, but also, if they have a two-day tournament, they're more likely to stay in the hotels and, and spend money in the restaurants and go shopping and, and stuff like that. So we may lose a little bit in the revenue part on the rental, but I think we'll more than make it up on the other side, on the, what they'll spend in the community.
So with that money, we, the county furnishes, the lighting and the staff as well to go with that?
They pay for the staff.
And we furnish the lights?
We do pay for the lights.
What does the lights cost per field per night? Do we have a clue what that is?
It's around $20 an hour. We've had them rated before, because we rent fields at night to public schools, like across the street at Red Hawk, I mean, private schools. So it's about $20 an hour. So if you're looking, the majority of our tournaments are after daylight saving time. We don't have a before daylight saving time and after daylight saving time rental rate, we have a rental rate. But it doesn't get dark until 9:30, most tournaments are done by 10:00. So most, most of our tournaments during that period are not going to use the lights that much. Now, they do use them more if it gets dark at 6:00, and they play to 10 o'clock, you're going to have four hours of lights, but, but we could, we could look at having a before and after rental time, but we're trying to just have one, one rental fee to stay consistent with what the other communities are doing.
So these tournaments, they, they charge?
The people that are running the tournaments do.
Right, so they charge a per-team fee?
Yes.
They also, do they charge a gate fee?
They can if they want to.
And they, and who runs the concessions?
Most, most of these, we let, they go back to our youth associations.
So who profits from that? Who profits from the concessions?
We, we do some, and the youth associations do. If they're, if they're in a youth association, we let the youth associations keep the money. If they're in a youth association, we let the youth associations keep the money.
So at the end of the tournament, are these people 501(c)(3), are they, the people running the tournaments, are they?
No, they're companies. They're companies. They're national companies, just like Little League.
So they're here to make a profit as well?
Yes.
So we know how much money they're making when they're here? They don't give us a financial statement at all and say, okay?
I don't know if anybody, I don't know that they give anybody a financial statement.
Well, I'm just asking questions for Henry County.
No, there's...
So anybody could come and host a tournament here, and we just pay $600?
No. They have to, no, they have to be, they have to have insurance, and then they put up a security deposit, and then they pay a field rental. And if the tournament doesn't make, they lose their deposit. If it rains and they have no gate and they lose money, they lose money. If they make money, they make money. But they're a for-profit company. And let me just say, you know, if the boards will not to have tournaments, it's a lot easier on our staff if we don't do tournaments. So if we don't want to host them anymore, we'll go from the direction of the board and...
I think what's most important is, when you, when we host these tournaments, thousands of people visit Henry County. So we have to look at the indirect impact, not the direct impact. We have a number of businesses that are benefiting from it, a number of people from out of town that are staying in Henry County hotels. So, you know, all of that, all of that tax revenue comes back to us.
I understand all of that. I just wanted to know where the county stands and what, because I've asked you questions for last, I don't know, last year or so, of, you know, what they pay, who gets the profit, what does our cost? And that's, I'm just trying to get clarification where we're at.
We are doing, I think, what is standard practice in park and recreation field, is we have fields that we rent for tournaments. We have a per-field-per-weekend rate, and we rent the fields to these organizations to bring their tournaments to this community and bring their constituents and their teams or whatever to this community. We're doing the exact same thing that Clayton's doing, that Savannah's doing, that Rockdale's doing, that Newton's doing, that I've called all over the state to find out if there's another model that's different than what we're doing, and I haven't found a different model.
That's what I learned at GRPA, is when you look at it from outside in, you look at it up, why are we not getting our cut? Why are we not getting a percentage? But what it boils down to is, it's a facility usage agreement for us. We're leasing out our facilities to an organization, just like we would to a community group. And if they meet all the standards that we put forth in our facility usage agreement, then they've met, that's their good faith portion of it. They put up their insurance, their deposits, they leave the facility the way we dictate in the policy, then they've met our criteria. The different aspect with the tournaments is like Commissioner Holmes just referenced, is the indirect impact on the community. That's why we work hand-in-hand with the CVB, because we, you saw the numbers on tourism, you saw the numbers on the generation of dollars within the community, and that was eye-opening to me, is how much recreation plays a role in generating these dollars for the community. So the challenge is, a lot of these other locations are what would be considered destination locations, like Gulf Shores, Panama City, places like that. And they offer incentive packages for these tournaments to come to their locations. They offer dollars, they offer to host different type of events for the facility, for the organization, the for-profit organization. But what keeps them coming here is how we manage these tournaments and how our fields are always ready. And we don't have the number of rainouts a lot of other locations have. Due to our geographic location, we don't have to deal with snow and ice, and how well we coordinate. And I think that's why Tim keeps referencing these other counties. It's one of the first opportunities for me in government to see us work with other local governments in a partnership that benefits us all. And so, this is a different animal, but at the end of the day, it is a facility, it is a facility rental for us. So I don't know if that helps or not, but that's my perspective.
I would just like to say, I agree and thank Parks and Rec for going out and trying to attract things like the softball tournaments and the baseball tournaments to the county. And I totally agree, and I guess it's just like any park, like we've got the soccer field over on Mount Carmel, and they have the big tournaments. An association rents it out, they make the money, whatever they make, but you can't ask a business, "How much money you guys making after we've rented the facilities to them?" And I think we, you know, we need to also look at soccer tournaments coming. Soccer is huge. Look what happened last night. Look what's happening at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium with United. So we want to make sure that our parks and our fields are ready. Who makes the money on the concession stands? Whoever rents it makes the money. If they pay us, then we don't have any say-so. We're looking at bringing the Fourth of July fireworks back. If we can partner with an organization, if the county wants to be at the table, then the county has to give something to be at the table. And if it's good facilities, that's what we're giving, and I think you guys are doing a great job. We need to look at bringing soccer, we need to look at bringing some music festivals. That's why we're looking at having an amphitheater. If Henry County is going to grow destination and bringing businesses here, we've got to attract people to Henry County, and so, good job. Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Barham.
Yes, Tim, I just want to commend you for doing a great job with this, and Rod, you too, as well, as these tournaments are important to the county. And firsthand, I can tell you, hopping to other places, my grandson plays travel ball, and we go to La Grange or North Georgia or anywhere else, and it's pretty much the same price, the food's about the same price as we charge, and the gates are just about the same, too, as well. So, you know, I think it's great for Henry County, and it helps our hotel motels here. And just continue to do that work. Thank you.
Anything else, Tim, Rod? Great job. Thank you so much.
Well, we had a slight change. Before we move into the financial report, I'm going to invite the Tax Commissioner up to present a resolution amending Chapter 3, Section 33121 of the Code of Ordinance of Henry County to establish the authority of the county to receive criminal history record information on pawnbroker applications.
Good morning. I appreciate you moving me up in schedule. We've got a tax sale supposed to take place in about eight minutes, so I'll make this short and sweet for you. Our current ordinance does not, there's a little bit of ambiguity in the language, and we're asking that the ordinance be changed to allow for federal background checks. The FBI will not do the federal background check unless our ordinance reads correctly, and Mr. Patrick has helped us draft that language. You have the information in front of you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, but really, this is just a cleanup, cleanup discussion.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
All right. Next up, we have a financial update by David Smith, Director of Financial Services.
The Library Director, Kathy, she said, "No presentation is complete without the numbers." So let's do the numbers. For this month, year-to-date, our property taxes have begun to increase, as well as our sales and use taxes, which includes our insurance premium tax of close to $9 million driving our collections for this month. Revenues are beginning to exceed expenditures for the past few months. That has not been the case, even though we still remain below in year-to-date expenditures exceeding revenues. Year-over-year, comparing to October of 2017, we're doing better. And that's primarily driven by vacancies in our legislative and executive and public work positions. I wrote here that we continue to leverage SPOLOST for capital outlays. That's a mistake on my part. We're actually using general fund, which I caution against, and we're going to present to you a plan later on of where we're going to do better in terms of not using general fund for our capital outlays. Overall collections for SPOLOST are above projections, which you'll see in the upcoming Could you enlarge that a bit, please? So this is our financial statement for the month, where you see our revenues beginning to approach expenditures. That's okay. Let's go to the next slide. Where, as we're doing it, comparing it to our overall budget, it looks like we're just moving up the barometer piece here. But on the next slide, which is showing our month-to-date where we stand, is showing how our month-to-date year-over-year actuals, we're doing a lot better. Next slide. So here's the month-end how we're performing. Graphical representation. Get to the month-to-date? Go back. Okay, I'm missing my month-to-date slide. Hopefully, it's in the next presentation that I sent to you. But it shows where, because I think the year, comparing us to the year budget, you don't get a clear picture. And the month-to-date actual versus our month-to-date budget is showing where we're almost where we need to be. There's about a $15.3 million gap in our revenues. We're going to see that made up coming in November, because we have significant tax revenue collections, and in our expenditures, we're right where we need to be. Okay? Fund balance. So where we stand with fund balance is, we continue to utilize general fund currently spinning out of our fund balance with our restriction that we have for 25% on our budget. We stand at about $22 million over the $71 million that we have. Any questions that you may have? SPOLOST. On the SPOLOST, this shows our revenue. I mentioned in an earlier slide in my summary that we're continuing to exceed our projections. This is primarily driven by the economy. Our projections were for about $2.2 million. We're coming in on an average of about $2.3 to $2.4 million. On the expense side? On the expense side is showing where we're still trending a little bit lower, but we're starting to make up the difference as our spending begins to increase. This is the graphical representation of where we stand with SPOLOST, where you see that the blue line is where we expect it to be in terms of revenue and expenses, and how we're going up and above, but our expenditures still trail our revenues at this point. Any questions that you may have?
Oh, okay. Are you complete?
Yes.
Okay. I have one question. Can you, you know, as you know, we're having regular meetings on SPOLOST 5. Can you talk about projections for SPOLOST 5? Is that okay?
So what I presented to and talked to Rocky and to Mr. Burkhart about is, I believe we're going to come in at about $220 million for SPOLOST 5. It might be a little bit higher than that, and that's based on our current trend of collections.
Yeah, and that's conservative?
It's a very conservative number. It does not include anticipated revenues coming in for any of these conference tournaments that are coming to our area, where a lot of people stay at our hotels instead of in the Atlanta-area hotels, nor does it include the Super Bowl amount.
Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we'll move into the consent agenda. The following items shall be considered on the consent agenda, but before I move forward, is there anything the Commissioners would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. First up is the building and plan review. Resolution approving the request for the creation of a new streetlight district for the villages of Walnut Creek subdivision. Next up is public safety. Henry County Police Department, resolution accepting donation in the amount of $431. Next is storm water. Resolution requesting approval to pay the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District annual dues. DOT, resolution accepting ownership of various public roads not on the state highway system. Steel DOT, resolution authorizing the chair to sign a Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MAG, application for fiscal year 219. And lastly, Georgia, I mean, emergency management. Resolution authorizing the renewal of the system maintenance agreement with Harris Corporation for $78,060. With that said, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Next up is Majestic Court. Resolution approving the appointment of Associate Judges for Majestic Court, the Honorable Martin C. Jones.
Acting Chairman, members of the board, please bear with me. I've had a long night. I think I told you at the last meeting that I was going to have to take call for Judge Veal, now Superior Court Judge Veal. Unfortunately, I got called out at 1:00 and then again at 4:00 this morning, so I'm kind of tired. Brief history, over the last 12 months, including, I guess, one more month, the magistrate court's losing a lot of legal talent. Judge Galvin obviously retired, and I think he had over 25 years of experience, and he's here present today. I wanted to acknowledge that he was here and thank him for all the contributions he made to the court, one of those being, and I think will end up being his legacy, which is, we finally have the warrant-writing software working, and Judge, excuse me, Chief Hammerman is going to provide us with some tablets, so we should see some significant savings for the police department over time in that regard. So I know that's a nice update. But I do appreciate all the contributions that Judge Galvin made to the court, and also, obviously, Judge Shannon, who put in 18 years with the court, not just to the court, but to various civic associations and boards that he served on. And we're going to miss both of them. But in addition to them, we've also lost Judge Brown to the State Court bench, now Judge Veal to Superior Court. Luckily, I feel like we have a wonderful slate of new judges to come in, all of whom are going to have over seven years practicing law, which will allow us to continue providing services as designated Superior Court judges, and also State Court judges pro temp to help out those courts. And they hid. We have three of them here today, and I'd like to introduce them. Danielle Roberts, Amanda Flora, and Vincent Lotti are all here today. We're missing, too, Judge Patton, as y'all may know, is municipal court judge in Locust Grove in McDonough, and he's holding court, so he couldn't come. Ralph Bailey is going to be our other judge, if they're approved, and he couldn't make it today, but he will be around tomorrow to be sworn. Any of you approve? But he had, I don't know if y'all know Mr. Bailey, but he has got several years in working in Henry County District Attorney's Office. So we've got a wonderful slate of judges, all of whom have already been approved by the Superior Court judges by order that's been entered. So unless y'all have any questions, I would ask the board to approve our slate of judges.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. And then, I guess, Your Honor, you'll be up there for the appointment of the magistrate clerk.
Again, just to give a brief history of our court, Sandra Rogers was our clerk for several years. When she retired, Shelley Gardner, who's also the clerk of the State Court, assumed her duties. I'm not exactly sure how that transpired. I don't think there was ever any board action taken. My reading of the statute and our local act is that board action needs to be taken. I will be starting my first term, hopefully first term, as chief magistrate on January 1, which creates a vacancy in the clerk's position, and I am asking the board to approve April Blackburn, who's also here today, to be clerk of the court. She has been with the county and specifically with our court for years and years, and she has been running the day-to-day operations of the clerk's office now for the last five years. Now, I don't want to take anything away from Ms. Gardner, who's made wonderful contributions to our court, including helping us move from doing handwritten warrants... including helping us move from doing handwritten warrants. I think Judge Godwin remembers the days when we were still handwriting warrants. Now, we're obviously much more technologically savvy and advanced, and she gets a lot of credit for that. However, I think it's important to have a clerk who is dedicated and focused on our court and our court alone. And I don't think there's anybody better than April Blackburn to handle that position. So if y'all have any questions, be glad to answer them, otherwise I'd ask you to approve the appointment.
So we're going to ask for a motion from the board.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is the Board of Education. And it's a resolution providing for the levy and collection of an annual avalorium tax to provide funds for the payment of the principal and interest on a hundred and ten million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand in aggregated principal amount of the Henry County School District General Obligation Bonds. Willie White.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Will White, I represent the Henry County Board of Education. As you all know, and as the public remembers, in two thousand and sixteen, there was a voter referendum approval for an E-SPOLOST. This is the continuation of that. With these funds, we are continuing to build the McDonough High School, the McDonough Middle School, the Performing Arts Center in Fairview. There'll be some additional, at each existing high school, there'll be an additional multipurpose facility, also going to do things like making sure that our athletes have the very safest turf that we can have in our stadiums. What this is, is a resolution based on the recommendation of the Board of Education, which is required when we sell these bonds to say if there is not sales tax dollars, in the unlikely event that there's not sales tax dollars, that there will be an additional property tax that is levied. That is this resolution. And Board of Education has made the recommendation, and we're asking this board to approve the resolution.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Leadership Henry. We have a resolution authorizing Henry to build, or Leadership Henry, to build that, to build out a room at a friend's house as part of their legacy project. And I guess we're taking a picture after this. So Sandra Gavely and Melissa, you're up.
Good morning again, Vice Chair and Commissioners. This morning, I bring a resolution to you asking for you to approve the construction of a transitional apartment contained within the organization of Friends House to be used by children in foster care who are aging out of the foster care system, thus providing them with a home situation where they can learn life skills in order to live independently. And just a little backstory. A Friends House is a home for abused, neglected, and abandoned children in crisis, and operates as a home for children under the Department of Family and Children's Services, serving Henry County children as well as children throughout the state. Leadership Henry is a program under the Henry County Chamber of Commerce to prepare, involve, and sustain leaders from diverse backgrounds throughout the community, and to improve the quality of life in Henry County. Each year, Leadership Henry is required to complete a legacy project designed to make a lasting positive impact in our community. And for this year's legacy project, for the class of two thousand and nineteen, which I'm a member of, and Sandra is also a member of, and we have class members here, the project we chose to do was to build out this room at a friend's house. It won't change the exterior of the room, just the interior, in order to serve these children who, who often are forgotten after foster care. They age out of the foster care system, and then in Henry County, there isn't a place for them to go at this time. And so we're asking for your approval to fund and construct this room to serve these children as they transition into adulthood. And if, if you have any questions, Sandra could certainly answer that for you.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes, and we're taking a picture.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is Public Safety, Henry County Fire Department. A resolution amending the noise control ordinance regarding the use of fireworks. Chief Kelly?
Good morning, board. You have in front of you a resolution to approve us changing the noise ordinance or the noise control ordinance of the county. What we did, or I was asked to look at the new state law that came in effect in July of this year. In the past, we were not allowed to say when fireworks were able to be shot in the county. In July, they did change the state law, giving the counties and the cities the right to set the timeframes of when fireworks can be shot. In the ordinance, we actually put in the word fireworks in there to help to identify that. We also took it out, a section on the impulse sounds where you had to use a sound meter. For us to be able to do this, it would mean anybody that could enforce the county ordinance would need a sound meter, and we do not have that. So we eliminated that part of the ordinance. What we did add are the timeframes. We're looking at consumer fireworks to be shot between five P.M. and ten P.M. Commercial fireworks to be shot same time again, but extending it to eleven o'clock. Now, state law does say that on certain days, you cannot change the timeframes on those, and those are listed in B and C, which are your holidays. They do extend the hours for them to go up on those dates. And that's where we had changed the ordinance at.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Thank you, Chief. Next up is a resolution approving the bid award for pine straw and wheat straw. Rod Green?
Good morning again. This morning, I have a request for the approval of an annual contract for pine and wheat straw that's required at various locations throughout the county. The request was bid through the purchasing department, and one bid was received. Department personnel did analyze that bid and recommend awarding it as a unit price contract with no fixed quantities to swift straw with the price sheet attached, and I request your approval, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next up is DOT, a resolution approving a bid award for pavement marking services. David Simmons?
Good morning, Vice Chair and Board. As mentioned, this is a request to award a bid for pavement marking services. The Department of Transportation acquires pavement marking services for various county projects. Having a contract for these items allows a quicker access to the product without necessity of bidding. Each time the product is required, and guarantees prices will remain firm for the contract period. Seal bids were requested for various pavement marking items and services. Bid notices were issued via Team Georgia Marketplace. Additionally, the bid documents were posted at the county website, and the bid notice was listed at the ACC GLGA website, and one vendor responded to the invitation to bid. This is a unit price agreement with no fixed quantities for a one-year period, with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions. And DOT will be the primary user. However, the contract will be available to all county departments that require this commodity. Funding for this product is allocated within the requesting department's budget, and materials will be ordered as required and projects approved.
Thank you, David. Is there a motion?
Move to.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you.
Next up is Financial Services, a resolution approving a bid award for solid waste removal and disposal services. David Smith presenting.
Good morning again, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, Henry Community. What you have before you is requesting approval to award a bid for solid waste removal and disposal services for various county locations. Our current contract will expire on December thirty-first of this year. So we solicited bids. Two bids were received. We recommend awarding the annual contract for solid waste removal and disposal services to Waste Management. Funding for this is available in various departments' budgets. We request your approval.
Is there a motion?
Move to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you so much, David.
Thank you.
Next up is Facility Maintenance, a resolution approving a bid award for janitorial services. Hutch Purvis is up.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Seal bids, bid nineteen dash fifteen, were solicited from qualified professional janitorial service providers to furnish services included but not limited to the development, management, monitoring, and provision of high-quality janitorial cleaning and custodial services at Henry County facilities listed in Exhibit B. Ten bids were received. Albright Janitorial of McDonough submitted the lowest overall bid, as shown on the bid tab sheet, Exhibit A. The recommendation is to award an annual contract to Albright Janitorial for the janitorial services, which includes supplies listed in the bids at a cost of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars per year. This will be a one-year contract with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions. The county may or, may add or remove locations as required, and the call shall be negotiated in accordance with bid prices. Funding is, for this commodity, is available in various departments' budgets. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is SPOLOST, a resolution approving the budget amendment to reallocate District One, District Three, and District Five SPOLOST funds from various projects to respective district resurfacing project accounts. Rocky Romero?
Good morning, Vice Chair and Board Members. As mentioned, this is SPOLOST two. What we're trying to do here today is to kind of clean up our SPOLOST two transportation projects. And right now, we still have three projects, one in each district, District One, Three, and Five, that there's still money available. And SPOLOST staff recommends moving these funds to resurfacing, to be used at a future, hopefully next year, resurfacing projects. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Do we have a motion?
Move to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board? All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next up, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody to speak for public comment?
There are no public comments today.
We removed the approval of the minutes. So now we're at Commissioner's comments. Does any Commissioner have any comments? Commissioner Wilson?
This is our last board meeting of the year, so I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So we'll see y'all next year, so.
Commissioner Barham?
Yeah, I'd like to say the same thing. Merry Christmas to all our employees, and hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I was hoping Commissioner Prince could make it today and congratulate him on retiring from the board. But, but anyway, I've enjoyed working with him, and that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Commissioner Clemens?
I just needed some clarification from the county manager's office. At our last meeting, when we did the class and comp study, did we adopt the Archer study? And is that what you guys are implementing, or is something else going on? Because I thought that when I looked in the book, we had like several things in the book, but I thought it was the Archer study that we adopted.
So Commissioner Clemens, there were actually two resolutions. The first resolution was a policy that was developed internally by the H.R. staff in consultation with the Archer Company. The second part of the resolution was the Archer Company's recommendations in terms of class and compensation, pay grades, and things of that nature. Keep in mind, those were just recommendations that were being provided by the Archer Company. And so I can provide to the board a list of all of the attachments and everything that was included.
We did not adopt the Archer study?
You did approve the Archer Company's recommendations, but within that recommendation, it does authorize the staff to go back, because we have an appeal section. And so, for example, if there is a position in which an employee feels like the pay grade should be a different pay grade, the study does allow a panel, including our H.R. staff, county manager, our cluster directors, and our department heads to make an amendment to that study. The only thing that we-
They said that in what we adopted.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well. And like Commissioner Barham, you know, I enjoyed working with Commissioner Prince over the last four years, and I look forward to his reception tomorrow. And thank you all, staff, for all your hard work this year. It was a challenging year, and in some ways, in some ways, it was, it was great, but we made it through it, and, and we'll be better for it next year. So thank you all so much. Next up, County Manager, do you have any comments?
Just wanted to echo all of the Commissioners' comments in terms of this being our last meeting of the year. It has been a long year, and I feel confident that next year is going to be even greater than what this year has been. The board, again, myself and Brad, both thank you all for your support in getting some very hard things to the finish line, and just looking forward to some new initiatives and ideas coming forward. I do want to remind the board that we do have an upcoming swearing-in ceremony on next Tuesday, December the eleventh, at six P.M. We will be swearing in Vice Chair or District Five Commissioner Bruce Holmes, Commissioner Barham, District Three, and then our incoming Commissioner-elect Vivian Thomas for District Four. So please mark your calendars for the upcoming swearing-in ceremony. That's all my comments at this time.
Thank you so much, County Manager. And I don't see County Attorney on here, but I'm going to ask him if he has any comments. It looks like he doesn't. Upcoming meetings and events, the December eighteenth meeting is canceled. The next scheduled meeting is January eighth at nine A.M. It's a regular board meeting. And then, after that, January twenty-second at six thirty P.M. is also a regular board meeting. There is a SPOLOST committee meeting, December thirteenth, at the Henry County Administration Building in Conference Room B. That meeting will start at six thirty P.M. With that, I'm going to ask, do we have executive session?
No, sir.
We don't have executive session, so I'm going to move to adjourn.
Commissioner Holmes, I have to apologize for interrupting, but I, the Deputy County Manager wanted to do one quick introduction, so my apologies.
Okay, Deputy County Manager.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Again, I'd like to introduce our new RIS manager, Holly Laffetain. She's coming here with wealth of knowledge. Holly, please stand up. And she'll be with you guys after the first year individually to talk about upcoming events and your take on the RIS department and moving forward. So just want to make that introduction today.
Thank you so much. Welcome. So I'm going to move to adjourn again, and wish everybody a Happy New Year. So can I have a motion?
Move to.
Second?
Second.
Any last comments for two thousand and eighteen?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
All in favor? I'm going to raise my hand on that one. Thank you, thanks, everybody.